And welcome back to Community IQ. I'm your host Garrett Pennell and again, looking forward to this great political series. Bringing on for the whole political series, our special co-host, Bruce Duncan, featuring our Lake County Commissioner Josh Blake. And remember to engage and to encourage building up versus tearing down voices of our community, Community IQ. Enjoy.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome back to Community IQ and this continuation of our series of political discussions with our local elected officials as we try to introduce you to those who appear on your ballot. Many of you make a decision to vote for someone based on a number of reasons, but this is an opportunity for you really to get inside of the person and learn a little bit about what it is that makes them who they are. And tonight, we've had an opportunity to interview some really fantastic people, but this gentleman that we're going to talk to tonight is one of my favorites. He's a very bright individual, has all the right motivations for seeking public office. And I really am honored tonight to have the opportunity to talk to Commissioner Josh Blake of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Josh, welcome to our program.
Thank you, Bruce. Glad to be here. Appreciate the invite.
Josh, you are, have an interesting background. At a very young age, you struggled with leukemia, I think. And talk a little bit about how that really influenced who you are today.
Sure. Yeah. So I was, I was born and raised here in central Florida and grew up in Lake County from the time I was five years old out in unincorporated Lake County on the west side of Lake Griffin. And my dad actually, we were from Orange County originally and going back to the 1880s. My great grandfather's grandfather was a pioneer in the phosphate mining industry up in Newberry. And so been in Florida a long time. My dad went to seminary when I was three. So we all moved up to Atlanta, Georgia, went to Columbia Theological Seminary and had a call from a church in Fruitland Park in 1987. So we all moved back to Florida after a three-year adventure in Atlanta and came back to Florida and I just was five or six. And so we've been living there. My parents still live in the house I grew up in. I live about a mile from them now, still on the west side of Lake Griffin. But anyway, yeah, so I actually was diagnosed. I'd been a very healthy kid, the picture of health. I think the, the worst I'd had was chicken pox in seventh grade. And suddenly I was, I was on a mission trip with our church youth group up in West Virginia, Gap Mills, West Virginia. I started having some very bizarre symptoms in, as a junior actually in high school. Came back, got, got tested and turned out I had a very advanced case of chronic myelogenous leukemia. It was, it was to the point that I had to go straight over to Nemours in Orlando and start treatment that day. So it was out of the blue, you know, from, from, you know, never having to go to the doctor to just a very intense regimen for cancer treatment. My family is, you could not find a more devoted and loyal family than mine with all our imperfections. And so my parents did research. We flew out to MD Anderson in Houston and a couple other places. We picked the place with the highest survival rate for, for my kind of leukemia. And I went and I had a bone marrow transplant out in Dallas, Texas at Baylor University. And my family pulled up, relocated, and we lived in Dallas for six months while I had, actually one ended up being three. The first two failed. So I ended up having three. My mom was my, my donor, bone marrow donor. And it finally took, that wasn't the end of the story though. Like, you know, we got to come home and I still used to go once or twice a week over to Orlando for treatments for a long time. I had a bad case of what you can develop after a transplant called Graff versus Hostet disease and had to be on high dose steroids for a couple of years as a result of that. Silver lining though, when my dad and I would drive back and forth from, from here to Orlando for these tests every week, that was when Rush Limbaugh was on the radio. And so that was my, one of my introductions to Rush Limbaugh was he and I would listen to Rush together. So he and I had a conversation about that when Rush passed away recently, what a bonding experience that was. And that kind of, in a way introduced me to, to a lot of conservatism. I was naturally conservative before that. Going back to my first political memory in Lake County was my mom taking me and my sister and at that time, my baby brother to hear Dan Quayle come to Venetian Gardens. I don't know if you remember when that happened, Vice President Quayle. And so I distinctly remember that. I remember waving signs for Bob Dole in 1996 out at the corner of 441 and Lake Griffin, Griffin View Drive. And so after that, my sister kind of got into politics with me and we did some volunteer work for the Lake County Republican Party. But anyway, back to your actual question, which was how the leukemia impacted me. The high dose steroids, I reacted very negatively to that. I developed something called avascular necrosis in all of my joints. I'm just one of those people who's very sensitive to steroids. They all fell apart from the inside out. I had to have all my major joints replaced by the time I was done with college. I would take a summer break or winter break and go up to Shands. So I've had both hips, both knees, both shoulders all completely replaced. And, but since that happened, since that time, things have been relatively normal. I was able to, my, you know, I was able to get off of the steroids. A lot of people have to be on anti-rejection medicine the rest of their life. I've, I was off of that stuff within five years. And so, you know, this is going back to when I was 17. I'm 39 now. So this is a while ago at the moment. But, but yeah, it was, it was a long, a long process and I'm, I'm very grateful. Not forgetting it, but in a way, the experience I think helped me to mature in a way that maybe wouldn't have happened naturally. But anyway, yeah, so that's, that was a big part of my life up until I graduated from college.
Josh, Garrett and I talked about your level of maturity earlier this afternoon. And, and I brought that up that, you know, what you went through as a very young, young man certainly had an influence on that. Now, you know, there's the old adage about preacher's kids sometimes go in the opposite direction, but you seem to embrace your father's faith and, and enjoyed growing up in the church under that environment. Talk a little bit about the influence other than Rush Limbaugh that your father had on your life.
Sure. Yeah. It's funny because everybody, that's, that's sort of the stereotype, you know, that everybody jokes about, you know, you're a PK, you must be wild. I was never that way. I was a pretty boring kid. The four of us, I'm the oldest of four kids. My parents were both from Winter Park. My dad taught at Winter Park High School for a little while before he went to seminary. But yeah, we, all four of us, I think, grew up pretty, pretty calm and, and for the most part, embraced the faith of our fathers, fathers and mothers in this case. But you know, my great grandmother was also a PK. And I think she, she was much more rebellious from, from the stories I was told that I ever was. But it's really interesting. You know, I told you, my dad went to Presbyterian Seminary and, and going back to Scotland, every other generation at least, there's a Presbyterian minister in our family. It's a very strong tradition of reformed theology and the reformed faith. Going back to the, the person that I named my son after, named my son Knox, Knox Witherspoon Blake. And, and my great grandfather, sixth grades back, was John Witherspoon, who immigrated from Scotland in the, the 1750s and was the only clergyman to sign the Declaration of Independence. Very quickly became a delegate from New Jersey and was first, for a new immigrant, became very involved in the, the revolution and, and had an impact on the Presbyterian Church of the United States long after he was gone. I think his grandson was the moderator of the Presbyterian General Assembly at one point in the 1800s.
Interesting. You know, you and I have talked about this many times before, but my family too immigrated from Scotland here following the Battle of Collodden, which was the, the last attempt by Scotland to gain their independence. And having lost that battle to Bonnie Prince Charlie in a very bloody and nasty way, they were kindly asked to leave the country and they did and found their way back over here to America. So it, it very similar backgrounds. Now, you know, I was going to save this for towards the end, but you brought up your Scottish heritage and your family's deep roots in Scotland. You've picked up a different tradition of, of your family's Scottish heritage and that's, you play the bagpipes.
I do. Yeah. So a pretty cool thing. One of the coolest things my dad and I ever did is after I graduated from college, I went to, ended up at University of North Florida after I did Lake Sumter here. And when I graduated, dad and I took a family history trip and we visited family cemeteries. We saw where my, where John Witherspoon's parents were buried, James and Anna. And the coolest thing about that whole trip is, is a little town outside of Hattington, which is southeast of Edinburgh called Gifford. And that's Gifford Parish Church is where John Witherspoon's father was a Presbyterian minister in the 1700s. And they still use the same communion cups today that they used when he was the minister at that church. That was the coolest moment of that whole trip. You know, we were able to see their, the family cemetery there and all of that. So yeah, that was a really epic trip. And we rented a car, went all the way up to Inverness and then just explored our way back down to Glasgow.
Yeah, that, I took a similar trip and it is neat how the Europeans are so much better about preserving their history. And, and you know, we're such a throwaway society that I guarantee you that the communion cups from the church after four or five years probably get tossed and new ones get purchased, but they don't understand or appreciate the need of history. And my family was from Brewer Falls, which is a little bit north of Edinburgh. And there is a statue of Admiral Adam Duncan in Dundee, which is in between Brewer Falls and Edinburgh, who is a descendant. And so yeah, it is pretty cool to trace your history when you go over there and realize that, you know, your blood runs deep in, in a country that, you know, America is, you know, we're getting on 250 years old here pretty soon, but nothing like what, what there is.
Yeah. And I actually, I kind of got distracted on your question, but the, the bagpipes, the way that happened was my dad purchased a set while we were there and, up in Inverness and they were mailed. We actually went to a place, heard this piper Angus McCall, who ends up being this world famous piper. We didn't know it at the time. He recommended a certain kind of pipes. My dad ordered some. So he sat on them for years. My dad's a very busy guy, never had the time. It's a big time commitment to get started, you know, for the first year especially. And so he called me one day, says, Josh, I'm going to sell the pipes. Do you know anybody who's interested? And I said, I started thinking about it. I said, well dad, don't sell the pipes. I'll take lessons and, and you can give them to me. And so I, I went up, there's a group in the villages, actually that's called the Sounds of Scotland. And these are all retired, like police and military band guys that just want to play in their retirement. So I went over there and I joined their club for like 20 bucks for a six month period. And, and they taught me everything they know. And within about six to eight months, I was marching with them. I was in their band and we were doing parades together. And I can't do it anymore because it's just, the time isn't there. But that's how, that's how I started playing the pipes.
Right. Well, you know, your family, your family is musically inclined because you got a brother that's a rock star of, of some note as well. That's your baby brother, I think.
My littlest brother. I tell you, this, this COVID thing has been really rough for them because they, you know, last, the year before COVID hit, they were top of the charts on iTunes and metal, the metal category. And they were doing two European tours a year. They were touring, they would go to play Japan. They played everywhere, Australia. And so of course, the live, the devastation that COVID had on the live music scene was just, you can't, you can't really describe it. I mean, suddenly it just came to a screeching halt. And of course, you could still record albums and release stuff, but a big part of the energy and the momentum you have, and they're signed with Fearless Records, is, is from your live shows and the following that you can create going to these big festivals. And so hopefully that'll, that'll improve here. I know they're already booked for a European tour later this year, but yeah, that's been rough.
It's gotta be pretty cool to have a brother that's a rock star.
I tell you, I joke around with my dad, because he taught us all to play guitar when we were like, he bought me my first guitar when I was seven. And my dad is a musical kind of genius. He plays everything. And, but I joked with him, it only took four kids to get one with a record deal. Just barely made it. The last one squeaked it out, you know?
There's still time. I can see a nice little, you know, pipe ballad from.
I have offered to open one of their metal shows with the pipes and they have not taken me up on it yet. I don't know how, how I want to take that, but yeah, the offer is there.
You know, the pipes briefly is, is something you either love them or you hate them. You know, a lot of people can't stand, they just consider it noise, but it is something that it, it's in my blood or in your blood. I, I hear those pipes and it just makes the hair on the back of my neck stand up. And I'm, I'm ready to go fight when I hear those things.
Oh, you can understand how that happens.
Yes.
Up until World War II, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's amazing.
My two older brothers went to the Citadel and they used to have, every Friday afternoon, they had dress parades at the Citadel. Well, the first thing that came out were the pipes and the, and the drum corps. And you would hear this coming across the parade grounds and it would just, everybody's attention just perked up, you know? And again, you either love them or you hate them. I mean, there's, but I can listen to them all the time. It's fascinating to me. I'm, I'm very envious of, of your.
Well, you could ask my wife how pleasant it was during the learning period to be married to me. It was, you know, I would go to abandoned roads in Lake County and just walk back and forth.
I've seen the video.
Yeah. You've seen some of the videos, just to stay away from people until I got decent.
Well, you've got to tell the story of Knox.
Yeah, of course. We had the twins, you know, the twins are four. And what I would play in the house at first, well, as soon as they could talk, they would just freak out and Knox would say, no backpipe, no backpipe. Some of his first words were no backpipe. So.
That's beautiful. Well, hopefully they'll grow to appreciate him the way that you do. So, and Jackie as well. But anyway, let's talk about Jackie a little bit and your, your, how you met Jackie and the twins, which are just, they're great kids. Yeah.
Yeah. So my wife Jackie, she's actually an old Fruitland Park girl, not old, but you know, she, her family been in Fruitland Park for a while. Her grandfather ran Leesburg Pottery, which at one point had a big operation shipping pottery up and down the eastern seaboard. She and I, it's a bizarre situation. Our brothers played baseball together at Leesburg High School and, and we were in a lot of the same circles, but we had never met. And we took a statistics class together at the Claremont campus of Lake Sumter before we went off to different state schools. It's the first time I'd ever met her. And we didn't start dating for a few years after that when I was already working for Marlene. Marlene was kind of the, the shared connection that we had. But, but yeah, we, we started dating in 2011, I guess. And her dad had, it's, it's kind of funny. She, she was okay with me being in politics because her dad had been on the Fruitland Park Commission for decades. And so she, she was kind of used to that stuff that goes along with that. And so yeah, we got married in 2012 and we have boy, girl twins Knox and Stella, who are going to be five in a couple of months.
Well, that's hard to believe. Well, you mentioned Marlene O'Toole. She elected state representative out of the villages area back in, I want to say 2010? Was her first? Maybe, yeah.
2008.
2008, 2008 was her first term. And you served as her legislative assistant. Talk a little bit about your time in Tallahassee.
Yeah, it's an interesting story. You know, I, I got my political science degree at UNF with the intention of going to law school.
Right.
And I actually started law school at UF and I wasn't there for very long at all. I remember one of the prep professors getting up and saying, well now, you know, you really, you only want to stay here if you really want to be here. And the reason I'd gone to law school is because I wanted to get into politics. I'd always been into politics. And I kind of took her advice and I said, you know what, if there's a way I can do this without, you know, you know, coming out of here with $80,000 in student loans and all this side of the sort of thing. So I just sort of, I, within the first month, I decided, eh, it's not what I want to do. And I, about a month after that, I got a job working for the Republican Party of Florida as a field operative in their, their state operation. And so me and a couple of other guys, we would go when somebody resigned or was kicked out of office, which happened, both of those things while we were doing it. And so starting in 2007, I was on the special elections team and we would go, first race we did actually was Chris Dorworth's race down in Lake Mary. And he, somebody had resigned and there was a special election. And you usually have a month or two, you know, you don't have much notice before that election happens. So me and a couple of other Republican operatives would go live in a hotel in canvas and run the campaign from the ground. And then he got elected and then we'd go off to the next spot. Stayed in a hotel down in Miramar for a district down there that actually stretched across Alligator Alley. It was a very weird gerrymander district all the way over to Naples. And so worked that race, worked a race in Cocoa Beach and then got a call one day from somebody saying, you know, I've got a race in your home area in Lake County. Would you be interested in being a campaign manager and working on that race? So I got together with Marlene. She is a retired IBM executive from Boston. So it took me a couple of meetings to understand her accent. You still can't understand, can you?
I've known her for 20 years. I still can't understand what the lady says.
Yeah. It took me a little while to understand her. She is a very sweet, but no nonsense businesswoman. And so I worked her campaign in, in 2008. And I thought I'll do this, I was working for a strategy firm technically while I was working her campaign. I thought, well, and she asked me once she won, would you like to stay on and be my legislative person in Tallahassee and work my legislation for me? So that'll be an interesting experience and something to put on the resume. So I did that and I thought I'd do it for one or two legislative sessions and move on. And I stayed with her. I, I developed a real close friendship with Marlene and she's a very wonderful, loyal, loyal person. And I've learned a lot from her. I joke around with her that I got like all of her IBM management training for free, just working for her for eight years. And so I stayed with her her entire time in the Florida House. She was chair of the Education Policy Committee for four of those years, which is pretty unusual. And yeah, so that's, that's how I got my, my time up at the State House.
We, we joke about Marlene, but she, I mean, once you scrape through that rough exterior, there's a heart of gold underneath there and just a very bright person and one of the hardest working people you'll ever want to run across. She's, she's an incredible person. And she still likes to break my back from time to time, but you're not going to have a more loyal and true friend than Marlene O'Toole.
And you know, you're getting the straight story from Marlene as she sees it. You're getting her honest opinion. And I tell you what, she has an interesting story in her own right, you know, growing up the youngest of, is it what, nine? I think nine children in a poor Irish Catholic family in inner city Boston, started in the 60s in the mailroom as a woman for IBM and retired as the top executive for the Southeast region.
That's correct.
Out of Atlanta. So a pretty wild story herself.
And she, I think she doesn't have a high school education. I mean, she, she.
That's right. Never went to college.
Never went to college.
College, worked her way up the hard way.
And as you said, just absolutely speaks volumes to her ability and her willingness to work hard and learn. Just incredible lady. And yeah, she's a trip. But we, we both share a love for Marlene. And there are many stories we could tell about Marlene, but if we did, we probably there'd be somebody waiting outside for us.
That's right. That's right.
Anyway, well, all right. So you've, you've done your time in Tallahassee and I can only imagine your frustration when you left that town at the inability to get done what you think needs to be done. You come back home and what do you do for, as you, before you run for county commission?
Well, actually I jumped straight to it. I actually, in my last two years working for Marlene is when there had been a situation that came up in Lake County. There'd been a pretty significant tax hike in the property taxes in, I think it was 2014. And I, I took issue with that and I had some friends, you know, ask me if I'd be interested to run for county commission. Something I had never considered, never wanted to do. I had sort of been prepping other avenues for when Marlene termed out. I had had an offer from the representative who was running behind her to, to work for him and a couple of other things. And I don't know, it's, it's really kind of crazy. It's inexplicable why I decided to do it because I, I ran against a nice guy, but he had been in office for 25 years and nobody thought the Titanic could sink, you know? And so I, I thought I was kind of just blacklisting myself for no reason by running against him. I joke around that, that a couple people in my family thought I could win. I wasn't one of them. And so, but we ended up, we ended up winning and by a, an unheard of margin at the time, 19 points. And so, you know, it was just sort of old fashioned. I think in part, to be honest, it was an anti-incumbent kind of year. So the timing happened to be pretty good. And I, even though my wife was eight months pregnant with twins, I was still able to knock on a lot of doors. And so yeah, and that's, got, got elected here in 2016. And that's, that's how I keep track of how long I've been in office is based on how old the kids are. Well, because they were born a month after the primary.
Your, your humility would prevent you. So I'll, I'll brag about you a little bit. I mean, your knowledge of the political process and your hard work is what got you elected. And, and you're correct. You know, coming off a 16% tax increase, it was voted in by the incumbent who, as you said, had been there for, I believe, six or seven terms in the county commission, which is an unheard of run for Commissioner Cadwell. And that's to be commended on him as well. But I think you showed people a different path and they embraced that. And not only did you beat him, you trounced him. Quite honestly, I mean, 19-point victory in a county commission race against an incumbent is unheard of. And, and I think we're all blessed to, to have had you win that election because I think you know, you fight a lot of losing battles on the county commission, Josh, and you and I talk about that a lot, but at least you're there and we hear your voice and the people get to see what true conservatism really is. You know, and, and you know, you and I argue sometimes about compromise and you, I'm, I have nothing but respect for your willingness to stand by your principles regardless of what's going on. And it's really been a fun thing to watch. And I'm looking forward to the next three or four years, which we'll talk about in just a minute. But one other thing I want to brag on you about is that you ran for reelection here just this past term, 2020. And you talk about an anti-incumbent year. You were the only county commissioner in the central Florida area to get reelected. That's, that's an impressive feat in and of itself. I mean, and I'm talking about six or seven different counties across central Florida. Not one running incumbent got elected and yet you did. And I think that speaks volumes for what the people of this county think about you, even though, you know, you're not always on the winning side of all the votes. I think they respect the fact that you are a true conservative and you stand by what you believe in. So.
Appreciate that. You know, I joked around with my wife at the time. I said, you know, my dream is just, once I got elected, I said, well, I guess my dream is just to be the Ron Paul of the Lake County Commission and just vote my conscience, no matter, come hell or high water. And we laughed about it. And it turns out I kind of did, you know, I, like I, you know, you have to decide, you know, when you run for office, and this is how I view it. And what I've tried to do is just tried to do what I want my elected officials to do, to view it as a contract. And if you run on X, Y, and Z, and you get elected, you sure as shooting need to follow up on X, Y, and Z and not back off and suddenly become a moderate or, you know, overly, you know, it's important to compromise where you have to compromise. But you know, you've got to do what you said you were going to do. And, and I've tried to do that. That's of course resulted in a lot of one-four votes, which is totally fine if you sleep at night and I, that helps me to sleep at night. And it's, it's interesting coming from an environment in Tallahassee where you're one of 120 representatives, right? And so you can usually find a couple of people that you ideologically agree with. You can go out for dinner afterwards and, you know, nurse your wounds. It's a little lonelier on the county commission when it's one to four, you know? But no, it's, it's fine. I didn't run to make friends, you know?
Well, you're always welcome to call me and I'm very blessed that you do often. And I appreciate that. You know, Josh, I have watched, I worked for the county for a number of years in the county attorney's office, Director of Economic Development. And I, I've obviously watched the county commission as since I, since childhood and continue to watch it. And there, there are a couple of guys that you remind me of that have served this county extremely well. Didn't always agree with them on other issues, but there was a fear in the county departments per budget time for these particular individuals because they knew that when they appeared in front of you, they were going to be called to task for their budgets. A lot of times county commissioners just kind of, of, you know, whitewash the budgetary process. And as long as they meet their, their budget and don't over exceed, they're okay. But you are one of those guys that truly serves the county commission, serves the taxpayers of Lake County because you look at every line item and you make sure that it's justified. And it is a truly, we're blessed to have you on that commission to do that because I mean, just like you and I in our home, look at our budgets and make sure that the money that we spend is, is productive. You do the same with your money at the county commission. And that's really the way I like to think that all politicians treat that money is it's, it's not theirs. It's somebody else's and you better be dang sure that it's spent in the proper way. I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate you saying that. And that's why I call you Bruce, because you've forgotten more about the county commission than I could ever remember. So you're, you know, you're the resource that you may not realize. But that's why I call you all the time, bounce some stuff off of you.
Every once in a while, I try to get him to compromise, Josh, but I just can't do it. It's just not going to happen. Another dear friend of ours, Pete Wall, and I talk about that all the time. I had lunch with Pete Friday, as a matter of fact, and your name came up as it always does. But what are we going to do with Josh? We just can't get him to, you know, compromise on anything. And we both always agree that we, we're mad at him because we wish we were him. I think is what it boils down to. But you know, Pete Wall taught me everything I ever knew about county government and just an incredible resource. So.
Pete's a great mentor. Yeah. And to be fair though, you know, it's, the issues that come up that seem to be controversial, those are in the small minority. You know what I mean? Like there's a lot on the consent agenda. So you end up agreeing with at least 80% of the things.
No, we just, we're teasing, of course. But, but generally the one time you're, the times you are on the end of that four one vote, you're on the right side. It's just, and I say right, literally and figuratively, you're on the right side. And, and that somebody's got to do it. And you do it very well. And you make sure that everyone understands why you're voting the way that you do. And that's what's important. You don't just do it just to do it. You make it clear to people, this is why I believe what I believe. And this is why I'm voting the way I'm voting. So I'm very appreciative of your time on the committee. And I really enjoy watching you. I do.
Thanks.
Well, so you're, you've served one term, as we talked about, you just got reelected. You've got three and a half, close to four years to go. What do you want to do with this last time on, on your commission?
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's an interesting time to be alive because we have what appears to be shaping up to be some of the worst federal intrusion into our civil liberties that I think have, this country has ever seen. I mean, just, just listening to some of what, what President Biden is rumored to be preparing in the form of executive orders on Second Amendment, you know, various things in the Bill of Rights, our, our freedom of religion in this country. The, the only answer in, in a scenario where we are being overwhelmed and bullied, to be quite frank, by the federal government is going to be some, some levels of nullification at the state level and at the local level. One thing I was, I was proud of getting done first time around was, well, two things. We, we changed our policy to allow all county employees to carry guns on the job, which it's shocking that that wasn't already the case in Lake County because we have some of the highest rates of concealed carry permit holders in the state. I think it's 12% of Lake County residents have a concealed carry permit and carry a gun. So we had this weird situation where somebody, you know, John Doe walking off the street to do a building permit could carry in the county building, going up to the fifth floor to get his, his permit. But nobody, the county, you know, we'll say a 50 year old lady who was working at the county and having to walk over to the garage, you know, twice a day by herself to and from work could not carry. That was a fireable offense in our employee handbook. So, you know, and I'll say this, on a lot of these big issues, the commission was there with me 100%. And I'm, I'm very grateful for that on, on some of the issues where it really counts. And this was one of them. It was a 5-0 vote to do away with that. And then last year, I'm losing track. um, I'm losing track of the years and it was a year and a half ago, we, uh, when we became a second amendment sanctuary county, the first in the state of Florida, that was also a five oh vote. And so, um, you know, and a lot of those issues, um, I, you know, I'm proud to say that we, we have solidarity in Lake County. And I think, uh, for example, Wall Street Journal did a story on our employee handbook policy change. I mean, that was a big deal. And then when we became the first second amendment county in Florida, Fox News corporate, you know, Fox News Channel came in and, and interviewed us and, and did a story on that. And so I, I like to think that we've had an impact on politics across the state in some of these cases. There are other counties that have followed our lead. And of course, these are not things that started in Florida, but, but I'm a big best practices person when it comes to conservative ideas. And if I see something happening in Wyoming that, that makes sense, I do my best to bring it here. And so, um, I think in answer your question, looking over the next three years, I think we're going to have to, uh, get even tougher than we did on, on those issues, on freedom of religion, on, on what federal agents are able to do in this county without being arrested themselves. And so one of the things I'm looking into is how to keep the government out of our hair. How to keep the federal and state government out of our hair in Lake County.
Well, you know, there's an old adage, you study politics, that the best, best government is the local government. Um, and, and it's the fact that, you know, Josh, you, you can't hide in Washington DC, you are the county commissioner for Lake County. You live in Fruitland Park. You go to the restaurants in Lake County. Uh, you, you go to the events in Lake County. You're highly visible. So people have an opportunity to speak to you and say, hey, I'm not liking what you're doing or I like what you're doing. And you're getting the feedback from the local officials as they, as the farther away they get from home, the more difficult it is to influence your elected officials. And that's really what, what you are, is that you are the voice of the people. Um, so I, I like to hear you say that and, and the understanding that, you know, we talked briefly about it, but I want you to go into some detail about the importance of local government in taking care of or protecting the citizens from the higher ups.
Sure. Well, so you know, the, the way that our, our structure is set up in this country, uh, you know, when you get down to the county level on an issue like when we, when we brought up the second amendment sanctuary resolution, the first thing I did, I, I think I gave you heads up on this Bruce and maybe strategized with you a little bit, is I went and I sat down with the sheriff Peyton Grinnell.
And welcome back to Community IQ. I'm your host, Garrett Penel. And again, looking forward to this great political.
Bringing to the state of Florida. Um, we would be the first ones to do it. But you're the chief of law enforcement officer in the county. And what you say is, is going to make a big difference into whether this has teeth or not. And he said, well, let me take a look at it. He sat down and got back to me. He said, absolutely. I support that a hundred percent. And he even wrote a letter of support. So we can pass resolutions on whatever we want all day long, and it doesn't make a, a bit of difference. But for the, the chief law enforcement officer of the county to agree with us, sign a letter of support, requesting that we pass this resolution is what made that, um, an interesting and profound, uh, I think, thing to do. And, um, you know, and there was a lot of whereas clauses in that resolution. One of them was that the, the state and federal or state and county local officials cannot be compelled to enforce federal law. So the, the, how that came about was you remember there was the democratic debate in the primary where Beto O'Rourke from the beta male from Texas got up and said that heck yes, I'm going to come for your AR 15s and your AK 47s, threaten door to door gun confiscation for the most popular weapons in this country. And that's, that's what pushed me to, uh, to bring that for the, before the board for a, a vote because I thought, well, that's not going to happen here. And, and we need to sit down and we need to get the sheriff on board. And that's, that's how that came about. Because, um, you know, they can crow all day long in, in DC about things, but, but somebody's going to have to come down here. It, it's not going to be Kamala Harris or Beto O'Rourke who comes door to door. They're going to expect local law enforcement to do that against their friends and neighbors. And that's why it's so important to have a sheriff like Peyton Grinnell to say, heck no, we're not going to enforce non constitutional law.
Actually, that's a lesson in a, a seventh grade civics lesson and the legislative and the executive branch working together to accomplish what's best for the people. And so it's nice to hear that you can, you're able to sit down with, with Peyton, who really is the top law enforcement officer, top member of the executive branch here in the county. Um, you talked about, um, protecting us from the federal government. Um, and what's happening in Washington DC right now is really frightening. And, and what is, what has prompted this is, uh, COVID. You know, it's interesting that the Chinese had an old saying that said, may you live in interesting times. And lo and behold, they created those interesting times for us to live in. But, um, how do you balance the, you know, I think it was Ben Franklin said, those willing to give up their liberty for safety deserve neither. Um, how do you balance that in this world today? We're interesting times that we live in.
Well, I think we, we have some pretty good examples to look to. You know, I, I think when, when push comes to shove, uh, you have to, you have to be willing to put everything on the line if, if you believe in liberty. And, uh, whenever I need reinforcement along those lines, I read, you know, Patrick Henry's, uh, you know, give me liberty or give me death speech. I think, um, I think that Senator Barry Goldwater is another person I look up to a lot. I, I have his acceptance speech, uh, his 64 acceptance speech on vinyl at my house. And when he said extremism in the defense of liberty is no vice, moderation in the pursuit of justice is no virtue. I think he hit the nail on the head. I, I think that, um, that part of the, uh, the strategy of the left is to co-opt the English language and turn it against us. You know, if so, to where if you showed up at a protest on January 6th, you're an insurrectionist, you know, just for being there to support, you know, the outgoing president. Um, I, I think that, uh, they've co-opted the terms man and woman. Uh, you know, it's, it's amazing to me that, that President Biden can call states wanting to reopen their economies, uh, Neanderthals. But even the Neanderthals knew the difference between men and women, right? I think that it's just a bizarre scenario here where you have, you have flipped the world upside down and they're using the English language against anybody who tries to stand in their way. Um, I think you have to be willing. They can't arrest all of us. They can't. You know, and I, I know I sent you a meme earlier that I bid, you know, you're, you're, they're threatening to just utterly dismantle the second amendment. There is a legal process in place in the constitution. If you have a problem with the bill of rights, right? You amend the constitution. They know they don't have a snowball's chance in hell of amending the constitution on basic things like freedom of religion and the right to bear arms. And so they think they're going to do it through unconstitutional legislation and executive action. And I think there are 80 million people in this country, roughly 80 million gun owners who would beg to differ. And I think you cannot comply. I think you buy yourself and I, buy yourself an I will not comply shirt and you stand up together and they're not going to lock up 80 million people.
You know, you talked about, um, how important that is to stand up and make your voice be heard. Um, you know, we saw that in this last general election, more people voted than in any other history or, or election in the history of this country. Um, you know, believe it or not, um, I think that you're starting to see people, I mean, they're almost forcing people to stand up and to fight for their rights in a way that they never imagined possible.
You should never be more afraid than when you hear left, far left wingers promise unity. Because their idea of unity is complete control and complete, I mean, talk, talk about the Soviet show trials of the 50s, uh, where the party line is, you know, is what you're forced to accept and forced to, uh, repeat and celebrate. Um, I think we're, we're heading that direction and just, I never in a million years would have believed I would see what I've seen in the last three years in this country happen. I mean, Dr. Seuss books, uh, you know, being canceled for absolutely nothing. There's, there's nothing insensitive in those books. Um, it's, it's amazing. It's, it's a, it's a, like I said, it's a bizarre time to be alive. But, um, I think that people, principled people can make a difference in this time, more so than at any other time in history. Um, I think that if, if you're willing to stand up, um, you know, just speaking the truth, I, I can't remember who said this line, but just speaking the truth, uh, is a revolutionary act in times like these.
You're exactly right. And that, that's frightening as you, as you said, that, that, um, to, and to speak the truth now, um, you are punished. And, and if your truth isn't their truth, then it's not the truth in their opinion. And, um, I, the lack of civility that we are experiencing in this country right now is what just absolutely shocks me. And, and the lack of understanding between individuals that, um, your opinion is different than mine, but it still has value. Um, you know, you and I grew up in an era where political debate and discourse was, um, welcomed and really what built this country. But now you either fall in line or you fall out. And that's the way that they are, are trying to force us now. Yep.
And I think none of us could have foreseen, uh, you know, we, we sort of expected tyranny to come at us from a different angle. None of us could have foreseen that the free market, you know, and these, these tech platforms run by these very far left, to the left of Che Guevara, far left people that run these big tech, uh, platforms, um, that they would be able to, to clamp down and basically dismantle our, our ability to, I mean, the public forum is, is what they run and to prevent conservatives from having a voice. In a way, I'm grateful it's happened now, even though I wish we'd known sooner because I think conservatives, libertarians, anybody, I mean, moderate, moderate Democrats, classical liberals are going to realize we have to create separate infrastructure, uh, our own separate infrastructure if we want these things, uh, to be preserved, the freedom of religion, freedom of speech. And if you even want, I mean, if the, the, the fact that they were able to, that Jack Dorsey from Twitter shut down and censored the, the president of the United States Twitter feed, Twitter account, while still allowing the leader of Iran, the leader of communist China currently operating a million strong, uh, person strong concentration camps in one of those problems. I mean, the fact that that was able to happen, I think should, should make everyone's blood run cold.
Well, it's, it's okay to tweet death to America, but not okay to, to, to tweet, uh, make America great again. I mean, absolutely unastounding to me that, that we have reached this level. I think you saw this week, even the Facebook, one of the executives of Facebook, one of the board members said, we've got to do something about this, that, that he's got too much power and we've got to take some of that power out of his hands and, and create an opportunity or an avenue here where we can have differing opinions on this. And, I mean, maybe that's the start, Josh. I don't know.
And, and it's not just differing opinions. I mean, it's, it's, it's opinions that these very people held 10 years ago, right? That, that the culture has moved at such breakneck speed that it's, you know, it's like when Stalin was in his, his rage, you know, and he would, he would just, you know, change a, a party position and have to purge the people that agreed with what he agreed with the year prior. I mean, it's a bizarre situation and, um, and it, you know, it's, it's put the fear into everybody on the left even to stand up against it. I mean, you saw J K Rowling, the author of, uh, Harry Potter, Noam Chomsky, some big time sort of lefties who are still free speech lefties, wrote that letter and, and they're getting canceled.
Right.
For standing up for free speech. It's a, it's a, a very bizarre situation.
Well, Bill Maher has spoken out and said, you're forcing these people, you're forcing the reelection of Trump by doing what you're doing. And, and.
Absolutely.
So anyway, well, Josh, I tell you, this has been a pleasure. I, you and I could talk and Garrett, I'm sure could talk for hours, uh, about a lot of these topics. And I think Garrett's going to probably have you back and get a little bit more specific on some topics that you guys are better versed at than I. And I, I look forward to listening to that podcast. But Josh, one last thing, um, you know, you, you talked about the things that you're proud of, um, that you've accomplished during your time. If there's one thing that you could do over these next four years, three and a half years specific, what would it be?
So one of my priorities aside from the things I've other mentioned, so I don't double back on those is property rights. You know, I think property rights, Lockean property rights are the foundation of Western civilization. And, um, I, I want to get the politics out of property rights. And so I think, you know, you're seeing as a result of our, our most excellent governor, Ron DeSantis, uh, you know, doing a relatively good job of keeping our economy open and especially in contrast with what happened in Michigan, California, some of these other places that became just terrible. Um, you know, the demand for Florida real estate has gone up. We've, you know, suddenly we, we have a housing crisis, which we had before. Um, so, so one thing I want to do is, is to try to create a, a more streamlined process where, um, you can build a home, government's not going to come charge you $15,000 in impact fees. Uh, people don't realize until they start to go through that process, just how much of an obstacle the government is to your property rights, you know? It's not just the, the neighbors that show up and protest a zoning change or something, but just the, the, the list of, of costs and, uh, obstacles that the government throws in your way when you're trying to develop a piece of property, to me is astounding. And it's something I didn't fully understand until I got on the county commission, just how political it can be. And so, um, so one thing I'm going to work on is trying to streamline that process, trying to remove the ability of the county commission to, uh, interject in a political way, you know, because somebody doesn't agree. Um, if, you know, if you buy a piece of property in Lake County and, and you don't buy the piece across from you, but you think you're entitled to that view of the lake the rest of your life, that's not how property rights works. You buy it if you want it. And so I, I think that, uh, that we've got to get politics out of land use, out of, uh, out of zoning decisions. And that's, that's one thing I'm going to plan to work on.
Boy, that's a refreshing, uh, attitude. I'm, as, as someone who's in the building industry and, and did what I did for a number of years, it, it certainly is music to my ears. Well, Josh, thank you so much for your time tonight. Um, and, uh, look forward to having you back and look forward to our next cup of coffee.
Absolutely. Thanks so much for having me.